So it's just about six o'clock. It's June 6th, 2019. I'm going to call the regular select board meeting to order. First item is to approve minutes from two things. One is our last regular select board meeting, which was May 16th, and another is a public hearing that was May 22nd. So two sets of minutes. Let's do the regular select board minutes first. We have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Excellent. Any changes, updates, comments? Everybody's good on the minutes? All right. So all in favor of approving the minutes from May 16th as written? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, public hearing minutes from May 22nd. Do we have a motion for those?
So move.
Second.
And I read them, but I wasn't here. They looked okay to me.
Yep.
Yeah? Okay. So all in favor of approving those minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain just because I was not here. Are you abstaining as well? So we have two abstentions on that. All right. Thank you. So those are both approved. Next is set a just agenda. So does anybody have anything to add, subtract, amend? Looking around the table. We're going to roll with the minutes. The agenda is written. That's good. Next, communication from the audience. Anybody here for anything that's not an agenda item? All right. Next, town manager report. Sean, give us the rundown from your office.
Okay. So continuing to work on LVRT projects, a couple of different capacities there. So we have the Creamery project, which we are trying to get the final design in order. That's a summit that's working on that. We're also working on, in collaboration with VAST, we are, we just earlier this week released design bids for engineering design services for Bridge 38 and 40, which are the two larger iron bridges out to the east. And this would be a design for the redecking and railing. We're also in the process of releasing design services bid, which will be either Friday and/or Monday for what we call Section 4 and 5, which would be the USDA grant. So those are going to be going out very soon as well. So some activity with the USDA grant and the bridge deck project. Both of those are intended for construction in this construction season. We'll see how that bears out. The...
So were we awarded the USDA grant officially? Or we're just moving forward with a nod from Ms. T.
I don't have the paperwork. What I have from USDA is that you are, we will get our commitment information in order, but you can go ahead and release your design services so that we have our questions answered to be able to continue forward with offering the grant to the town.
Great.
We should by June 15th or thereabouts have more details from USDA that codifies this.
Which sections of USDA grant for?
Yeah. That's for what we call Sections 4 and 5. So it's basically Slap Hill heading east, trying to get as far as we can get.
Towards that East Hardwick.
That's correct.
Both of those things you just talked about are separate funding parts, separate bid?
There's three different projects I just talked about there.
That's true. Right, Creamery Road, essentially, they went parallel in Creamery Road, and that's all being taken care of, as you said, by?
Summit Engineering. We have our design. We're about ready to go to our construction bids within this next week or two on that for the parking and some improvements in the section back here by the depot and town garage.
And then here, ended that to East Hardwick.
That's the USDA.
For, but, and the bridges are?
NRBC.
NRBC.
Now, you'll...
Is that clear enough?
I have it written down. That's how I can keep track. I'll hit it now. Also took part in a field visit with Ken Brown from VAST, with the designers from VHB, so that they, this is another VAST-led project for, it would be a section from the Yellow Burn up here to North Main Street. They're in the phase of getting the design in order. Sorry, that's Fee Trans-led, excuse me. VAST, Ken is kind of overseer for the projects. That is in design phase, and they are very clear about this, that construction. So this would be the area that Danny cleaned up and moved the gravel, where the town put some gravel in where we get the washout and that stuff.
From the road, from the Yellow Burn.
Yeah, I'm sorry. From 50, or Wilkett Street this way. That's correct. Thank you. This field visit was to look at that section as well. So work over there is, you got the area that has a washout, there's some headers that need to be improved. It'd be redecking and railing. That's all on Fee Trans. We just, we're there as a partner. That's in 2020.
And we have more fundraising to do to come up with our match on that. So all the other stuff, we are good on match. But that project, we're still working.
Any other questions on LVRT? Okay. We have coordinated our roadside mowing bid with Summit Contracting, and they're going to start their mowing beginning mid to late July.
Is that different than Summit Engineering?
No, this is Summit Contracting, so it's different. That's correct.
Why did you change vendors when you had a vendor that did a hell of a good job?
We got a better price, so we decided to make a change. So we made a change. That's why I didn't...
We don't always have to make decisions based on money.
No, I understand that. There was input with, you know, Tom Fadden was involved in the discussion as well.
Who's Summit Contracting?
Summit Contracting is out of Lindenville area. They do a lot of mowing for towns in the area, so did check their background, you know, make sure that we'd have a good product moving forward.
Well, we have a good product. Well, how much money?
I won't disagree. We saved $2,100 over two years. So we're...
We'll see how it goes.
Say again?
We'll see how it goes.
That's what we had to do at this phase, I guess. Any other questions on that, Danny?
Nope.
Okay. Town has released the paint bid for the depot, so WIZ has provided some support on this. RFP is out on the town website. Bid's due on June 19th, so those will be coming in. I've been taking part in ongoing planning meetings on the Yellow Burn Business Accelerator Project, so Eric's been on those as well. Next week is a grant application will be heard by Vermont Community Development. That's one of the groups that is tied in with the Agency of Commerce and Community Development. So that one's pretty significant. That's a million dollar grant ask, so that is next, that's on June 13th. And we had some activity this week where with some of the potential tenants moving forward, there's some letter of intent, you know, some commitments, if you will, as much as you can have at this phase with trying to get some tenants in the space. Tom's out because he has a break, so I'll just hit a couple of things on the Public Works Department stuff. In my report, you know, I'm working on a number of projects for spring cleanup. We did have just a detailed project I'll comment about now. We had the duck bill project on Wilkett Street. What a duck bill is, it's a one-way valve. The objective is that on one of our 30-inch storm drains, that would be installed, and if we have high water on the lemoil, the intent is that you're not backing up your storm drains and potentially having standing water in the streets around West Street, Wilkett Street, and all that area. So that was completed the end of May. That went well.
Was that the one duck bill on that big 30-inch? Or did they also do the smaller ones?
They just did that. That one, it was just the 30-inch right across from West Street where the bridge is. So that's done. Any questions on that?
Do we plan to do the other couple, like the one across from the fire department?
Yes, because that we know is a low-lying area. That is historically a problem, so it's in the queue.
It is.
I don't have a date for you, Eric, but it is in the queue.
And that's significantly cheaper, somebody told me.
Yeah, size. Yeah. Our contact at NRCS, Natural Resource Conservation Service, gave us a little feedback on that, that that one's a bit smaller. So the pricing is a little bit more reasonable.
Where's West Street?
I have it as West Street, but it's where the bridge comes out, coming off, right? By Northeast, diagonal to Northeast Garage.
Cottage Street.
Right? What do you call it? Cottage? Yeah, thank you, Cottage, sorry. We did host a meeting with, Kerry Brown is noted there, and Kerry Brown is providing some assistance on, there's also a 2020 project planned for stormwater management. That's at Route 14 South, excuse me, Route 14 Storage, which is South Main Street area, the Donuts project, where their storage buildings are. And where there's a drainage well near there that has been identified by the stormwater management folks as a project area where we could do some improvements with some grant support from that department. So that's in the queue for 2020. I already mentioned the VAST field visit. Did take part in two different trainings, so I'll just hit these quick. Did an audit and accounting full-day training as offered by VLCT. Casey and I took part in that. And then did, took part in a full-day employment law training, just covering various federal and state changes that have taken place recently, also sponsored by VLCT. Amanda and I took part in that. We did last week host a planning meeting with our engineers for the Bridgman Reservoir Roof Project. And we are, we got our, we're getting our paperwork in order so that we can get some of our structural designs figured out and then, you know, nail down this construction timeline. The key point for today is that, or coming off the meeting, is that we have selected the technique that we are going to use to cover the roof, which is, I guess the best way I could describe it is if you go into any gymnasium roof in the area, if you look up, you've got your girder system, and then above that, you've got your steel sheeting that has got the waves built into it, so it has the structure built into it. That's the tactic we're pretty much following to do this. So it'll be, it'll be a flat roof that is pitched. It's going to take the dead load for the snow loads we get in this part of the state. They'll put on the girders, they'll put on the steel, then they'll put on plywood, and then we'd have a EPDM roof on top of that. So timeline on that, which has been the timeline right along, is completed in December. I'm pushing, hoping we can do better, because we all know what happened this last year with, winter came November 1st. So we're on, we're on the right path there.
So just one other note for, because I did sit in on that meeting, and they wanted to do a concrete roof, but the engineers were basically, they don't want to do it because they don't know what the footers are, and they don't know that it can take the load, because it'd be really heavy. So that's why they're going with this metal one. And then they're still working on engineering, because if the steel rafters are steel, then they need to be coated somehow so they don't rust. Or maybe they could be aluminum or some other metal that's not going to oxidize or rust.
And just, I think it's another important point. As it turned out, the precast or the poured concrete in place were more expensive options than trying to do the strategy of the steel with the girders. So that ends up that it's a cheaper, sorry, more economical way to do it. Sorry, that's the wrong word. More economical. Any questions? More on Bridgman?
Surely everyone knows that winter always comes in November.
Back in the day, you had your projects done by Halloween, so I'm a little bit anxious about this timeline, but it's what it is. So with some input from Aaron, we've been, Aaron's been doing a lot on this, and his crew has, but actually, we looked at just one point. We got, I got some feedback about the speeds. We're getting this ongoing in different parts of the community, just in the areas that might be flagged as 25 or 30. We hear that ongoing, you know, we'll get complaints about speeders, which it is hard at times to control. But one area we're kind of honing in on right now is we've done a little bit of investigation, and, you know, we're just looking at the layout. And from the blinking light heading onto South Main Street, we don't, we've got 25 coming in in various areas. Everybody knows the law is, when you see the speed limit sign, you keep at that speed until you go to the next speed limit. Well, it's quite a distance between where we have our 25 and the blinking light to the next speed limit sign, which is down past Jenny Road on South Main, and then it goes to 40. So what we're looking at is setting up one of 25 speed limit signs, probably in the vicinity of Jenny Road. What happens is people come off that corner, and they see the 40 way ahead of them, and then they speed right up, you know?
They don't even see it, they just know it's there.
So that's it. So the chief's been helping with some input on that, and we're hoping to do some work on that in these next couple of weeks. And then also, there's ongoing work in various parts of town, but this would include East Hardwick as well, where we're, you know, we're doing, just keeping an eye on things, trying to patrol, keep people slowed down. I did get confirmation, one of the reports I've already given information on is our Water System Consumer Confidence Report, which is due every year for a public water system that we provided to customers in the bill that went out in, or let's see, April, I think. We got our confirmation from the drinking water program that the consumer confidence report is good. It meets state standards, so that's done. And then on the local emergency response plan, we do, this has been in place for, I want to say, five years now. We're obligated to do an update on that every year. And the adjustments on this were, this year were just some contact information, and the majority, actually, I think the only changes this year were that I was updated to be listed as the town manager, so those changes have taken place. The other thing is, in the past, the sign-off and approval went through the select board. I'm looking at this, and what I did is just, I can sign off on this as the town manager. I do have the appropriate training, so I, that's the tactic I took. I just signed off on it, and it's in place now. So we'll get it up on the website and make sure it's available. Assuming everybody's comfortable with that, that's how we'll go. I mean, that's allowed, and that's a procedure that we can do. Okay? The chief helped me on this, as did Tom Fadden, just on the various items that are listed in this. Any questions on this one?
They get filed with the State Department?
Yeah. NVDA kind of keeps track of this, and Vermont Emergency Management would want to be able to access it potentially, so.
They'll actually reach out.
Yeah.
Bruce, why don't you reach out to me?
Yep.
And certainly, there's times where we've been fine here, but other parts of the state. But they reach out to each region to see if there's any issues anywhere and so on. And it kind of gauges when they open their operations center, their state operations center, as to how many areas are, you know, affected and so on. So they utilize that, sometimes maybe more than we do, because we know people around, you know, who's doing what. But they don't, so they actually utilize it probably more.
Okay. I have two other things. The, our town phone system, we talked about this, I was trying to figure, I think it was last meeting, we talked about town phone system. We are having problems with our system, so there's some switch somewhere that is buggering up our voicemail system, so my apologies if that has, you know, to any of the citizens that have been trying to reach us. We are trying to work on it, and hopefully we'll get our contractor here tomorrow and/or Monday. There's some internal switch. We cannot figure it out. Lifeline is fine. You may have trouble trying to leave a voicemail. So if it's after hours, it can be challenging. I'm aware of this. We're trying to get it resolved. We are going to be taking steps once we get into the fiscal year to update the system. I'll say it again.
Good.
Okay?
Is it dependent on Comcast?
It's nothing to do with our internet connection. It's just something to do with the system itself. It's...
Don't you have Comcast for phones also?
We do, yeah.
I thought we did down here, too. Okay.
It's consolidated. It's just something screwy with, it's not unique to the carrier. It's about the phone system itself.
Yeah.
So we've been in touch with our contractor on the phone system about, there's some switch, and we can't figure it out. Can you please help? We're working on it.
Okay.
So my apologies if this has been a problem for anybody trying to get us after hours or things like this. The only other thing I have is the, Tom asked me to just get the paving bid numbers in front of the select board, so we can make a determination how to proceed on that. You want me to hit that now?
Now, because we've got it right in number three.
Oh, my bad. Thank you, Eric. I didn't have anything else from my report. Are there any questions?
Street sweeping.
Oh, yes. Ah, sweeper. But only once.
Yesterday.
There's going to be some more later tonight, and some more tomorrow, and that's it.
So...
That's what I know.
Right. Who's the vendor?
Oh, for the week?
We rented the machine, and it's our guys that are running the machine.
We opted, huh? We used to, we used to do it that way.
We did?
We used to do it that way, and it didn't get done, and then we hired the guy.
Right.
Right. That came before Spring Festival.
Right.
Price, we opted to rent it instead of having them do it.
From last year, but that was a bad vendor, too. It was the previous vendor that did a good job for three years. I got from Hampshire. You'd come in, and in two days, [bleep]. Three machines, two days, it was done.
Yeah, last year or the year before, the guy was broken down a lot.
And we rented the machine this year.
Same machine? Or, well, one of them, anyway.
Is there a particular location you're concerned about, Danny?
No, Sean.
No, seriously?
I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about the process. We went backwards on, you know, on that deal.
So we ought to look next year at...
Hiring someone to do it and have it done before Memorial Day.
Yeah.
Like we have always done.
Well, it's been a while since it was done, but like you said, it's been three years, maybe, since it was done before Memorial Day. It's been a while.
We had the contract, and they had said they would be here the week of May 20th, and then the weather went to hell. I mean, that's, so it's an excuse, but that's what we had for information. So we had all intention to have it done before Memorial Day, and it didn't work out. So, I mean, we got to take this into consideration moving forward.
Yeah.
To Danny's point.
Yeah.
We, what Tom has shared with me is that it had been hard to find contractors in this line of work, is what he said. I don't, that's just his words, so.
Well, maybe next year, we'll see if the folks in Hampshire are still out there.
Right.
See if we can get them to bid. All right. Thank you. Next up is Police Department report. Aaron Cochran.
Okay. We have, as I reported before, Officer Mueller has got confirmation on his school and et cetera. I have June 16th on here, but I double-checked exactly, June 13th is going to be his last day as full-time police officer. He's, but he said he would stay on part-time and try to help us out some until he had to leave, so, so we'll still be, he'll still be around for a little while, and we'll be able to utilize him, you know, hopefully for some shifts, because obviously, we're going to have some open shifts, so. But that is in the works, so. And we already have, you know, a position posted anyway, so we're accepting applications and et cetera, so. So that's where we're at with that.
Are you getting applications?
What's that?
Are you getting applications for the position?
Not yet. Not much yet. We've had a couple.
Is it posted open till filled kind of thing, or?
It's, yeah, there's not even a date on it. Yeah. Yeah. So...
Now we need tos.
Right. Now we need tos.
Now we need tos.
Yeah. So, yeah, we're just, you know, just leave the posting up, and when we hired Officer Mitchell and Officer Tetrow back in 2011, we ended up hiring two out of the two interviews that were back-to-back, and they were great candidates, you know? So you never know.
Right.
But, but we know there's two we're going to be hiring for, so.
Good.
So Scott Gagnon is the, is the person we chose to hire for the dispatch and administrative position, administrative assistant. Scott's not, not a stranger to here. We actually hired him as a part-time police officer back last year, late last summer. He had previously worked for Berry City Dispatch, as a dispatcher for about 10 years, and had most recently worked over to the Caladine County Sheriff's Department. So he's well-versed in the, you know, dispatching arena. He started June 3rd, this week, Monday. He's done a great, great job. Things are going very well there, so.
That's good.
So he's doing a great job there. So that's a big help to get that position filled and, and...
Where's he live?
Uh, Berry. Lives in Berry. Yeah. Has for years and years, but, yeah.
Where's County Sheriff's have it?
St. John's Berry.
St. John's Berry.
Yeah. Yeah. So you drive him from Berry to St. John's? Yeah, yeah. So, yeah. So it's a much shorter drive for him as well, but, but, yeah, it's worked out great. It's great for us to get that position filled, and it's been a good ask. There's a lot of different aspects of that, of hiring him, because he is a police officer as well, certified as such. We may need to utilize him at certain times for that, and that gives us somebody sitting at the desk that knows law enforcement, knows, so might be able to answer some of those questions on the phone. It might otherwise get put off to, you know, an officer, or an officer may be on the road and may have to call him back in. There's just a lot of, you know, different things that I think will find that, his role there to be very useful, so. So, yeah. Monthly incident log is in your, in your packet there. We had 211 incidents for the month of May. Things are starting to move very long as summer, I think, is coming, so. So one of the biggest incidents we had was Memorial Day weekend, which seems to be traditional in Hardwick. Unfortunately, we tend to have some big incidents that happen over that weekend in Hardwick. That was the case in East Hardwick, and I'm sure you're familiar with. Just to give you a little idea of the scope of that, was that we had probably, that we had probably 30-plus state police there. There was five or six of us there. I worked with one of the captains, one of the lieutenants from state police. They brought up their command center truck. We worked out of that. They brought up their armored vehicle, as well as their full tactical team, and they had a hostage negotiation, HNU, team there as well. It was quite an extensive operation. I am pleased that it came out. Nobody was hurt. Came to a peaceful ending, and we were able to move forward. It was 2:00 in the morning when it happened, but, but, yeah, but it did come to a peaceful end. But it was a very large operation to get to that point. So just a few people that, you know, I would like to thank while we're here. Karen Collier, we reached out to her to try and put something together for coffee. We knew it was going to be into the early morning hours, so she got stuff from the Village Diner, coffee, et cetera, and brought it up to us so that we had it there. As I said, you know, there was a lot of people there. We utilized the whole parking lot of the, of DNL Beverage up there. They were closed anyways, you know, at that time of night. So we utilized that. Karen Collier, so just like to thank her. Tony also came up, works in both places anyway, but he came up, actually opened the store, made coffee in the store so that people were able to use, you know, utilize, we were able to utilize that. So we really appreciate that. Lyndon Thompson from Smith Store had reached out, sent me a message. If there was anything we needed, he'd be happy to get it to us or whatever. We were, you know, fortunate to have something set up at the time, but they did reach out, and we appreciate that as well.
Wow, they had a lot of support.
So there was quite a bit of support, yeah.
And you mentioned them from the diner, right?
Yes. Yeah, the Village Diner and Karen. Yeah. So, yeah, it was, for one, it was a holiday weekend, so you're bringing 30-plus troopers So, yeah, it was, for one, it was a holiday weekend, um, so you're bringing 30-plus troopers out, you know, on a holiday we, weekend, plus two special teams, um, several of our guys, um, I was not expecting to have to come out, but, um, you know, did, and, and, uh, we had to call out, you know, a few others as well to work that situation, but, um, so it's, holiday weekends are tough, 'cause people are doing things, especially Memorial Day weekend, so it is a tough weekend to get things done, but, but it did, and, and so I'm glad that the way it came out. Uh, the arson case I mentioned the last meeting, uh, from Greensboro, it was a case two years ago, it was an arson case, uh, that went to trial, and, uh, was a two-full-day trial, um, that did result in a conviction, um, arson conviction there, so. A lotta work on Detective Leo's part, uh, for that, that case. He spent two full days up there for that, but, um, so, uh, the next thing I have, um, Greensboro Select Board had called me and asked for if we could bring the speed card up. So I told them I think it would be a great idea if they bought the speed card, um, and, uh,
Speed card?
So the speed card is something we've had since, I don't know, 2009 or 10 maybe. It hooks behind a vehicle. You haul it out to somewhere, set it up. It's, does exactly the same thing, sort of, as what our signs do, the new signs that we bought, except it doesn't collect the data that our signs do. So there's, there's several problems with it, because it's been rewired. The batteries are over a hundred dollars apiece. It takes the, the marine batteries. The batteries are quite expensive. They don't tend to last, doesn't work in winter, don't tend to last from year to year, and we don't even have a vehicle that can pull it anymore, that has a hitch on it to pull the vehicle. So that means we're gonna have to utilize one of our personal vehicles or try to get, you know, the town pickup or something to do it, so. So my thought is, is that, and so I wanted to just kinda open up a discussion to see if anybody else's thoughts were.
I should have given it to them.
So, well, I think it's worth something, but I think we should, um, you know, I, I don't know what it's worth. There is, there is a company I can reach out to to see, you know, what it might be worth, but I think it's maybe worth something to somebody else more than it is to us.
It's worth more set up at Greensboro than it is sitting in the garage.
Exactly. At least in Greensboro, we're, we're still getting the benefit of it, you know, and, um,
Without moving it around.
We've got the speed signs, we, that are collect, you know, that we can use to collect data, so the speed signs are kinda the new way to move, uh, towards, instead of these things you gotta cart around, um, I can throw two speed signs into the backseat.
They specifically wanted the, the cart? Because wouldn't you also, I mean, since we're, your department covers Greensboro as well, so you potentially would be setting up, uh, speed signs up there on occasion?
They ha, they wanted it for Breezy Avenue.
So they, they, they wanna specifically set it up and so?
Yes, and they have a resident there that would pick it up every day and store it, and I don't like the idea of a private citizen picking it up. You know, if the town itself were gonna handle it, then, uh, but I don't like the idea of somebody private using the equipment and knocking forth, and so I, I just think that it's great, I, great opportunity for them to, to, uh, have a great piece of equipment. But, that's my thought, so I, so I wanted to open it up and see what.
They could happen.
So it still works?
It still works, still works.
It's just that it's, um, not ideal.
Not ideal. Has to be registered, so we're, we're, we have to pay, you know, a registration, because it has to be registered to haul it on the road. It's a trailer. Have to have a vehicle to tow it, so if.
You're not a very good salesman, 'cause you don't make it sound like it's very valuable.
Well, they've already.
Like it's a good way to spend money, like something.
They, they don't have a problem with the person that's already talked to them, and, and he would take care of it and whatever, so they're, they're good. They know the pros and cons, but, and I don't know that they're going to want to buy it, but they said they would entertain it.
Why don't they just, yeah. Why wouldn't we just give it to them? Yeah.
I don't know why we would. We, the police.
It's not really worth anything to us after all that that you've said. Get it out of the way. Let's, yeah. And then register it, yeah.
And then they can let anybody they want.
Let them have it.
I mean, what do you think it's worth? I mean, I don't know. I don't wanna give something away. It's worth $10,000, but I got a feeling it isn't worth anything.
I don't know. There, there's $6,000 to $7,000 new. I don't know. I don't know.
I mean, it's, it's tied to the.
Yeah.
So 10 years old.
Yeah, but it's, it's not being used. The point is, it's not being used.
It's not being used, it's not.
If Greensboro is, they have a con, I mean, it's part of our police department.
Yeah.
Give it to them, and if they wanna fix it and register it and use it, I don't see how it's gonna hurt us a bit.
Right, I mean, if you think, also think about it, if it's coming out of the police department, you know, and they've been part of.
Negotiate to them, see what you can get for it.
Right?
Yeah, they're good.
Yeah, see, see what, I mean, we should say free until they say what they'll give us.
Oh, deal.
Trust me, I just don't.
If you're good with me making a deal, I'm good with that.
Make a deal.
Make a deal.
And we're not, you know, reasonable.
I would rather see it being used and just.
Right, I agree totally. And it's, and it's difficult for us to get it there back and forth unless we're using one of our own vehicles.
Yeah, that's right, and the sign, I think the sign thing is much better. Number one thing about those, they collect the data.
Yeah.
Which is a huge part of.
And they're mov, they're easy to move. I can throw two or three of them into the backseat of the car and throw them up in 15, 20 minutes.
It's costing money and, uh.
Right.
Well, I also think Greensboro's been a good partner in fielding the police department, and without them, we would be able to, to have a full.
The drastic changes, for sure.
Yeah, and so they, they pitched in and they've been part of it, and if they wanna take ownership of this piece of equipment that you're not using, yeah, make it happen.
Let's move on.
I will do that.
Uh, thank you. Uh, let's see here. The last thing I have is the, uh, police, new police cruiser cost. I was a little surprised.
So you have one that's up this year?
So I have one that's up this year, um, and we had appropriated 35 for it. I remember the discussion last fall where I had gotten a heads-up that they were discontinuing the sedans, like we currently have. Those are discontinued. The only thing they were keeping was the smaller sedan, um, and the Explorer. And the smaller sedan and the Explorer are gonna be hybrids. They had estimated as much as an $8,000 increase in cost, which is that plus, um, you know, as you have on, on the sheet there, so. So what I looked at, so I looked at the smaller sedan also to, to, to see. The smaller sedan is, is essentially the Ford Fusion. Uh, it's a four-cylinder, uh, front-wheel-drive. So we would essentially be going to, from the full-size sedan that we have now, to.
No, we've made that mistake before. It's too small cruisers before.
Yeah, and so, uh, four-cylinder, front-wheel-drive from a, uh, you know, six-cylinder, all-wheel-drive, uh, in a smaller cruiser. So you're trying to fit more into less. Uh, I, I just don't see it working, and I don't see it, uh, they, they call it a city responder, uh, hybrid responder. So maybe New York City, that would be fine.
Yeah, we're not a city.
But we're not a city. Uh, we have a lotta backroads. We, we put a lotta miles on it in a year. It's, you know, it's, I just don't see that vehicle. And that vehicle was still running, um, state bid between $28,000 and $30,000. So, as you can see here, not a huge difference between that and, uh, the Explorer. So what they did is, is with the Ford Explorer, they do have a 3-point lead, 3.3-liter V6, and they have a 3.3-liter hybrid V6. Uh, the, the, those are the two prices that we have here. The, there is about a $3,000 cost difference between a standard V6 and a hybrid V6. So as you keep that $3,000 in mind, um, I also have a calculation for you which shows the, uh, cost, estimated cost savings of fuel per year with a hybrid vehicle, um, which actually had the fastest speed, the fastest stopping, um, of the, of the vehicles tested. They do a, I think it's Detroit, where they have a track where they test all the police vehicles. The hybrid actually tested, uh, the best. And as I said to Sean, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know how the, all this electric stuff works, but.
It works well.
But it apparently, yeah, it apparently works very well, so.
Definitely does. The huge difference when we traded ours in.
You, you, what, Danny?
Yeah, we had the little C-Max there, hybrid thing, and just, it's amazing. Now we don't.
The, you know, my recommendation.
Acceleration is quick.
My, yeah, that's what they found. The acceleration and the, and the stopping was incredible, so. Your cost save, I do expect with a standard V6, 3.3-liter, you're, you're, when a vehicle is idling, your use of, a police cruiser is idling quite a bit. They have a lot of, uh, equipment to, to stay charged, et cetera. There was $5,500 left over. So that brings us closer to 41-something that's still in there, um, but I estimate the car outfitted is probably gonna be about $45,000. That's with lights.
It doesn't matter. Sorry, you're still gonna buy lights for it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So really, I mean, the only difference is the $3,000 between the two options, and that you, you save that in fuel savings in the first year, so.
I just wanted to make you aware, 'cause it's gonna look like we're gonna have to overspend that to get where we wanted, so I wanted to.
It's not just gonna look like it.
Get that done too, make that go where.
The prob, you know, problem is, we don't have a choice. We, we looked at, or I don't feel we have a choice. We looked at Chevrolet now. We looked at other manufacturers. Uh, Chevrolet only has a truck and the Tahoe. Uh, those are the only police vehicles.
The Tahoe's a really big one.
That's a really big and really expensive, yeah, and a lotta gas on that, on that as well. So those are the only two that Chevrolet has. Uh, Dodge, there's not really much for a dealer around here, and there's not, the dealer that does law enforcement sales is not anywhere around here, so.
Different line where the K9 vehicle got told, that doesn't count?
No, that's actually sitting in there as well, so.
Doesn't that help us?
It does. Um, it's just that we only appropriated 30, we only earmarked 35, so I just wanted to make everybody aware that this is what it's gonna cost, and this is actually only what we appropriated, so. So it's in there, but.
Well, it's a hybrid.
It's a hybrid, so it charges itself. No, no. No, it runs on gas as well at the same time, so, so.
Carrie's asking if we need some sort of motion to power. Aaron, I don't know.
I don't think we do. I've always done it in the past, but we've never had the situation where it was over, so.
You've often come to us with recommendations and.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll figure it out.
Sounds like the way to go is with the.
The money's there, and, and as you said, we had a $5,500 carryover, and the sale of the, uh, uh, K9 and, and car is also in there, so it's.
More concerning is going down the road, thinking about the way that budget works, that they're likely not gonna get cheaper.
No, and this was a big jump for us that we didn't expect, you know, and the problem is, we obviously do our, start our budget in October, you know, and I just found, was able to find out and get numbers. They're, they're taking June orders, uh, for June production, is what they're doing, so I was just able to get pricing, et cetera.
So we're gonna wanna remember that in the, when we're doing budgeting and looking at the, um, capital budgets.
This fall, we're gonna need to readjust that, yeah.
Adjust the capital budget, because this is, this is gonna be a cost that's gonna.
Next year, we don't buy a car, so it's not gonna be huge for next year, but it will be for later.
We have like three in a row or something, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Carry on. Go, go hybrid.
That's, I think it'll be a tremendous cost savings. I mean, we started, when I started in 2011, we were at, uh, line item of $23,000 for fuel, and I think now we're down to 15-ish, somewhere down there. You know, a lotta that was changing vehicles, more efficient vehicles, and, yeah, the whole deal, but.
One of the things we did talk about was that you're gonna have a better trade-in value on this than the three, which even gets that tighter as far as balancing it out, gas versus the hybrid. You're gonna, Danny's point was, I get a better trade-in cost on my hybrid.
Although.
Cruisers are usually pretty used up when it gets around to change trade-in. Yeah.
It's just opened up, right?
Right, exactly.
The last year.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, anyways, that's what I had. I just wanted to make you aware of it.
Yep, now it sounds like you're moving in the right direction. Carry on. Thank you.
Actually, if I can, the skunk issue, uh, I did a, I did a little more research on the skunk issue, um.
Did you find a dead skunk on the road?
Well, I did not find one, but, uh, I did talk with the warden. The fishing game does not handle small game, so if there's dead small game in the road, they don't handle it.
What's small on?
So anything labeled as, as big game.
Big game, deer, bear.
Wildlife, wildlife, they will handle.
That's what they do.
I don't think they would be, because they're not big games.
What's that?
Elephants and drags.
No, no, not listed in Vermont as big game, no, but, uh, turkeys, uh, deer, bear, moose.
Are small or big?
They're considered big game.
Big game.
Okay.
Under state law.
Fish and wildlife.
That's fish and wildlife.
That's why I thought.
Not fox, skunk, or anything like that. They don't pick that up.
So coyote would be?
Who does?
Big game?
Nope, coyotes, nothing.
Who does?
So they're, nobody.
So they're basically conservative stuff, you have to get licenses.
And yet.
Essentially, 'cause.
He still wants to know.
Right. So I don't have, I don't have a solution for you. I only have more clarification of who doesn't.
In other words, don't call really.
So.
Okay. So basically we have a gap for the small game, because of anybody who.
That's what you're reporting.
There's a gap.
Yeah.
There's a skunk gap.
There's a skunk gap, yeah.
All right, there you go.
Okay. But it's not, you know, until somebody gets.
It's not us.
It's not you.
No, it's not us.
It's not the state.
No.
Okay, so, everybody keep pitchfork handy and, uh,
Shovel.
Take care of it yourself.
It's not a novice idea. Everybody be responsible for themselves and for their world.
Sean took care of the last one, remember?
In all seriousness, or, uh, Tom tried to find it Monday, that Monday morning, so on the weekend, we didn't wanna do a three-hour call-out for a public works guy to deal with it. At that time, we had assumed it was a game order issue. We know it's not now. Public works guy will scoop it up, you know.
I'm not sure it's a public works responsibility either.
So.
But it, it sounds like if they're going by, they do scoop it up.
They don't like to pick them up, so.
Really?
That's what it is, so. I mean, I took care of it. That's the point for this one. We'll try our best to take care of it. If citizens can take care of it near their property, I know about downtown village is a little different beast.
So you said, if citizens can take care of it, do.
Yes.
Okay. If they can.
That's what it sounds like.
If they can. I don't know what the other option is this year.
Yeah, I don't know if the other option is, but I don't think it's calling in a, uh, you know, a town employee to deal with it.
Critter du jour on the menu.
Yeah, there's a niche opportunity there, isn't there?
I think so. Wild game. All right, well, thank you for that, that's.
Thank you for staring that up on your way out.
Making a stink. All right, so we're gonna move to, item one is, uh, we have the ATV ordinance amendment? I thought it was the ordinance that was amended. Anyway, the ATV ordinance that we had passed some time ago, it went through its notice period, it went through a, a public hearing, um, which I missed, but I understood that at least Larry Hamel made a comment.
No, no, oh, sorry, if you remember, excuse me, I was confusing.
There was no, there was no resistance.
Concern around it. Right, I don't think anybody has any concerns about it, so, um, can we, uh, let's take that one, and could we have a, a motion to accept that as written?
So moved.
Any more discussion on the ATV ordinance? Home favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And one abstention? You have that, Casey? Awesome. Next, item two is, um, the parklet ordinance, which has gone through the same process, was approved by this body, was published, noticed, and had a special hearing for which people did attend and comment, I believe, even though I wasn't here. So it's been through that whole process, um, and, uh, and so options before us now, or somebody could just move to, uh,
Move to.
Move to, uh, move, to move to, to accept it as written?
There you go, yep.
Actually, I saw a problem in it.
Okay, so we don't have a second yet, and.
You weren't.
We don't have discussion yet.
So you wanna get a second and discuss it?
Sure.
Okay.
But then we're gonna have, yes, let's do that.
Uh, just point of order?
Yeah.
There was a motion on the table, is that correct? Danny didn't attend. Is he able to make the motion? Does that matter?
No, I don't think it matters.
Okay, thank you.
Cause it wasn't the, no.
Okay, thank you, just asking.
Yep. Uh, so was, were you gonna second, so we could discuss?
I'll second, yeah.
Okay, good. So you had, you wanted to make, you need some changes to the wording of the ordinance, correct?
On section four.
Hang on.
This is a.
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
Sorry.
Section?
Section four.
Page one.
Page one, section four.
Section four, okay.
Of the parklet ordinance. This is, this is a conceptual document. This is not, I mean, this is sort of, if the world were perfect, this is what it would be like.
Okay.
We're not talking about any particular parklet.
Right.
For the, and for the town of Hardwick, this whole thing applies.
Yeah.
Section four, it says the selectmen will, may allow parklets covering up to four parking spaces in total. No single parklet will exceed two parking spaces. I suspect that this was written with the village in mind. But if we think ahead in time, East Hardwick is becoming an, an up-and-coming place, and I can imagine somebody setting up a cafe and maybe wanting.
Well, it's a village center now, right?
It's a village center. Maybe, let me finish, Danny. Uh, maybe wanna set in a parklet. Meanwhile, somebody, two somebodies in the village of Hardwick have set up parklets. So now we've got a potential parklet in East Hardwick running competition with other parklets in Hardwick. If four spaces throughout the town are all that are allowed, then you're, you're potentially setting an institution, a business in East Hardwick against businesses in the village. So what I would like to suggest is that instead of saying four parklets, four parking spaces in total, that we say four parking spaces within the village center as defined by VSA, and I don't know what the subordinate thing is. So that East Hardwick can potentially have four parking spaces occupied by.
So you would say, instead of four parking spaces in total, four parking spaces in each village center?
In any village center as, as defined by VSA 24.
I'm inclined to wanna change that to two per, because four is a lot.
But one could, one would likely take up one.
Parking spaces.
Four parking spaces is a lot.
How many parking spaces are there up in East Hardwick?
None. That's my point.
This is saying four.
Don't East Hardwick need public parking spaces before we have to go through all this?
That's why I'm saying build it into the concept and let, then the discussion of individual institutions can, can take care of the point.
Parking on the street of East Hardwick, that's my point.
There are no designated spots.
There may be.
I think there are not.
Where?
What you're saying is there are no designated parking spots?
I don't know. I, I just don't wanna shut out the possibility.
Well, they can amend the ordinance though, too, in the event that they have...
They could, right.
Parking spaces, so maybe we don't have to.
Or a select board could interpret it such that it's not covering up any more parking spaces, 'cause there aren't any.
So...
And you could, a future select board...
It just seems like a lot of work for something that doesn't exist. But Sherry's point is a different point, it is...
It's a lot of spaces.
Well, I mean, that's your point, right, Sherry? It's not East Hardwick, it's too many spaces.
I think that's a lot of spaces, anyway. I mean, I, yeah.
Which...
But I'd also like to...
Four total within the village?
Take root.
So this is, yeah.
Seen off of it.
Well, there's also provision in here for, um, for identifying places where you want them, right?
Yeah, the select board can designate. Section three, the select board shall designate location boundaries. Within one or more dedicated streets or highways.
Right.
I undertook, I understood that, however, to mean, in the process of granting the right to do that, we are designating, yes, you can do it here, as opposed to getting a map of the village and saying, we won't have this here, but not here.
It kinda sounds like we would create a mapped zone beforehand or something, but...
The way it's written.
You think?
I do.
That's, that's my...
Paralysis by analysis, people.
So Danny's point is...
It's not ridiculous, it's, it's discussion.
We should, right, but...
But you're right.
New, new discussions shouldn't be coming up at this point from the board, I don't think.
Well, the, the point about the, Whiz's point about the villages is a, is an interesting one, that we're, that we've looked at it as, you know, maybe without considering that, um, a parklet in East Hardwick has really no parking implication in the heart of the village, and vice versa. So maybe they should be treated separately, but I, I guess I'm inclined to go with Danny's point that, at this point, you wouldn't be blocking any public parking spaces with a parklet in East Hardwick.
Right.
So you, the select board could...
And I'm working with a theoretical.
Right. So I, you know, I think the select board could say that there are places over there that parklets could be allowed, but wouldn't take up any parking spots.
Well, if there's no parking places, then we don't have to give permission.
Well, we would, I think.
I can't get right out of one, I'm sorry. It's not that.
But the, to Sherry's point about, um, total of four...
We can't even use that. There's nothing about parking spots.
That's true, there's a sidewalk that needs a little love. That's a whole other discussion, speaking of analysis paralysis. Um, so four parking, so my thought on four parking spots being a lot is that, yes, that could be a lot, but...
But it says up two, right?
Up two, you don't have to do them all.
So the select board would choose at the time?
The select board would say, you know what?
Whether or not there was one already.
'Cause wouldn't it matter a lot where it was?
Where it's gonna be, yeah.
That's the next phase of the discussion.
Yeah.
When there's a proposal that comes to us, then we...
Police is input, public works is input, my office is input, what we feel is a reasonable place to have these. That's the next step.
The parameters around the process, the parameters around the process, move to the next step. I would agree.
I like the fact there's a process. I think, I think that's a good thing, to have a clearly defined, if you wanna do this, these are the steps you have to go through. These are the parameters that you must meet.
All right. So right now, we have a motion and a second to approve this as written. We, I, if we're ready, we can call the vote. If somebody wants to make a motion to amend or do some, you know, to do something else, that'd be fine, but otherwise, I'd be ready to charge ahead.
Call the question.
So hearing, hearing nothing?
Count to sixty days.
You're counting? All right, where does that put us, Danny?
For ATV or for this one, Dave? For the parklet or for ATV, seriously?
It's about sixty days.
Parklet, though, bear in mind with parklet, for the good of the conversation, we're effectively looking at not having to do any, receive any applications until November 1st, the way the ordinance is written.
Right.
All right.
And...
So even if it goes into effect, that's what I think, that's...
This doesn't take effect for this year.
Essentially.
It's a seasonal, it's a seasonal thing.
Uh, all right.
It's outlined in section four.
So...
As written.
Any more discussion? Anybody wanna make some kind of a motion to amend the current motion? All in favor of approving the parklet ordinance as written, please say aye.
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 Late to the party.
Well, 'cause I'm reading June 1st.
All opposed, please say nay.
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 You got it? Motion carries.
Yep.
Are you still counting?
Yeah, well, I just, the timeline's a little funky in section four, because we don't need a lot of time to decide, and it'd be nice for somebody to know before June 1st, potentially we...
We could, we could have a tighter timeline.
Right, it says April 15th, I assume we would do it, but it's just...
Do it before.
We're that way, though. Not everybody's good like us.
Yeah.
Good.
All right, there we go. Next up, some, item three, summer paving bids, um, got three, is that correct?
Yep.
Can you share that type of information on that prior to the meeting, so we can look at it?
On the paving bids?
When there's bids and stuff?
Yeah, my apologies.
You know, just so we got an idea, we got something in our blind, and have to ask silly questions.
Yep.
Which I'm pretty good at.
No, I had a handoff from Tom, and I should've got the numbers to you, Danny, my apologies. So we had, uh, three bids received for paving, so transferring, um, Tom had coordinated receiving the information from these three firms. He, uh, has prices from Jay Hutchins Incorporated, here at $72 a ton, total cost $79,632. And, uh, sorry, taking a step back, this is for work on Glen Side, Sumner, and Dewey Streets for the paving activities there. So again, Jay Hutchins, Inc., $72 a ton at $79,632. Pike at $76.27 a ton, $95,338. Grays at $84 a ton, $97,860. Tom's opinion was that we, or his recommendation, excuse me, would be to go with Jay Hutchins, Inc., uh, $72 a ton, uh, $79,632.
You have experience working with them, or?
Uh, I cannot speak for Tom. Tom had done the coordination on this. I didn't get that level of detail, I have to admit. When Tom dropped the bids, he was very comfortable with the bid, is what Tom said, and he said, I would go with this, is, you know, it's all right. As far as experience and comfort level, I don't have that level of detail.
He wouldn't have made that recommendation if he wasn't talking.
Right.
Okay, good.
It's local, I respect it.
So, um, and is there any chance, do we, I don't remember what we had in the budget for paving, but the last couple years, we were able, because the per-ton amount came in a little lower.
It was like 64 last year.
I know, we were able to do a little more, and I'm just wondering if there's a chance, just 'cause I know Tom had talked about...
You're a paving rep, I guess, right?
Yeah, I'm representing Pike.
Yeah.
Yeah, the price per ton is definitely different, the total tonnage is different, different, too.
Okay.
We measured it up a couple of different times, uh, we found out with about 1,250, I think the document says, right?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
They've got, they have 1,106, I would say, maybe based on that math. So I don't know the tonnage. In regards to that, you know, it's slightly different. That's why the number sounded so much more skewed, because I said it for bucks.
Yeah.
What's, what's really happening here with the $4?
And we always get that, it seems like every year, there's the tonnage rate, and then there's also an estimate for the number of tons.
Right. One, one thing that I would, uh, I would say is that a number of towns now have put out a bid document that has, they already know what they're looking for in terms of the measurements as well as the tonnage. Puts everybody across the board, you know, evenly.
Yeah.
Because I think maybe the depths were even different, you know?
Be interested to see that, so.
Yeah.
Are, are three, are the three numbers or two away?
Uh, tonnage?
Yeah, well, the tonnage is a big issue.
Yeah. But what, I mean, did it? Is it your name?
My name's Nigel, thank you.
Nigel.
There are, there are some differences in the depths for the various coatings, coatings, and where you're applying them. Tom did take that into consideration, and he still is comfortable with going with Jay Hutchins, Inc., is what he relayed to me.
So, but I think, to your point, though, that it sounds like going forward, maybe the way we should do it is to just say, you know, we're, we wanna cover this much area at this depth.
Yeah, a number of towns do that now, so that all the contractors, when they make their, their bids, they're all getting the same exact footprint.
Right.
They already know what the anticipation is, and...
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, one other thing to keep in mind, and obviously I'm not looking to change any opinion here, but you might wanna work with your contractor to get them to schedule work as early as possible in the season. One thing that Pike Industries does not do is we don't have an escalation clause for the rising price of liquid asphalt during the season, and I know some of the other vendors do. So it behooves you, uh, to, to, you know, Tom, to, to have them in as early in the season as you can. Whether that'll make a difference over $4, probably not, but it could very well be a difference of $2 or $3, and your vendor may come to you and say, the price has gone up, and we need to adjust that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sean has them here, does anybody want to look at them? I can't tell the difference.
Danny says pass them down.
Well, if you wanna table it, so that we can get our apples and apples in order, that's another strategy.
I don't really wanna table it, just for what it's worth.
I mean, I'm good with Tom's recommendation.
Yeah, my suggestion was only for next, right?
Next season, it'd be a, it'd be a cleaner process.
We're running the same thing every year.
Yeah, that's right.
Absolutely, because they, they always come in with different tonnages.
Yeah, that's right.
So if we, if we go...
Yep.
Yeah, and say we're gonna cover this area at this depth.
So may we pick your brain to find out who does this? What town should we contact to...
I can, I can check with Norman Patino, he, he has actually worked with a number of towns to help them, kind of structure a document, um, and he is the person that would normally be here, we have multiple bids tonight, so, yeah. I can have him check.
We do a bunch of, we, the town puts out a, a lot of stuff to do, and I'm sure we can get a bid document.
Well, what's their obligation to come in at this price, or do they just, you know?
What do we give them now?
Is it guaranteed to cost that same amount, or is it possible that it can change?
Well, that's what he was saying, that some of this is asking...
Due to the volatility in worldwide energy and petroleum markets, Jay Hutchins, Inc., reserves the right to adjust pricing based on asphalt cement.
Yeah.
It, it does happen.
Asphalt cement escalation will be captured on a book price for a month of May 2019, so.
Right, where, where's our document? We'll say that we don't have that escalation clause, but we like to have the bid, the contract and agreement within seven days. You know, sort of allocate it so that we can, you know?
Well, that's good for 30 days, so that we can always schedule it and write off.
Yeah, that's what you say, be it happen early.
Yeah, I'm not looking to sway you, I'm a taxpayer here in Hardwick as well as Greensville, so the speed board thing was an interesting thing. Conversation's low, it's a great recommendation, by the way.
Yeah, so I make this year, I think, we move on, do I need to eat something?
I feel the same way.
Yeah.
So, do you wanna make that motion?
Sure, I move that we go with Jay Hutchins for the paving contractor this year, for, and we get on it.
Could I ask for the total value of Graysworth, just so I can report back?
Yeah, uh, Grays' total was, uh, $97,860. I'll repeat the numbers, Jay Hutchins, Inc., $79,632. Pike Industries, $95,338. And Grays was at $97,860.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Nigel, thank you for being here.
Yeah, appreciate it.
And to follow up on the sweeper thing, um, I, I would definitely understand if you had a sweeper that said they couldn't meet you this spring, because it's been a lot of that. A lot of them have plenty of rooms available, uh, but no operators, so that may have been, that may have been what you've run into, somehow.
All right, so motion on table from Danny is to... Uh, accept the Jay Hutchins, did move on that.
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So the motion carries, and there was an aye, there was a belated aye coming from the orange shirt. He was reading, he wasn't counting this time. Um, next up is water, wastewater system budget for the coming, the next fiscal year, and I'm assuming that's why Casey's sitting with a projector.
Yes.
Thank you, Nigel.
Thank you. I just need to finish up my...
So water, wastewater...
I just need to finish up my section a minute's before I...
Yeah, no, it's totally fine. You're gonna, really? Wow.
Blinker.
What about you, Danny? You good?
I agree.
Okay. So just while we're, um, getting the numbers up, I talked with Sean earlier today, and, um, we just talked about how tonight, we're talking about this budget for water and wastewater, and we have, so the whole expense side, and this is kinda like the town budget, we need to decide on the expense side, but on the revenue side, we had talked about, um, looking at, taking another look at the water rates. We won't have a year of the metered water rates until the fall, and that's kind of the, I guess, the accepted minimum of what we should be basing any changes on, so, we're gonna, we're probably gonna look at having that, we could look at the rate structure later as a, as a separate item, but right now, we're looking at the expenses, really.
So we have to move on the expenses before we know that, we're not moving on that year, and we're just gonna update, right?
I think this is looking, well, potentially, we don't have to, but we would want to before July 1st.
I need it to be in place for July 1st, yeah.
Right.
It's the operation side, you know?
Yeah.
I guess from the big picture, it's not really much different than how we would do the other budget, the other portions of the budget, you know, in town. You're, you're doing your best to get your expenses figured out, and assuming the tax money's gonna come in to cover that cost. In this instance, we're assuming the revenue's gonna come through the water and wastewater fees.
It seems like we wanna know if we're, I mean, I haven't heard of recent update on the water income, so we wanna have, I want to have a ballpark on that before we...
Yeah, we have a little detail there.
Move on.
Yes, I'll have some information for you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, so this is water fund budget, um, so...
Oh, sorry, so just to follow up on, we'd have to, I mean, typically, kinda the same as the regular town budget, we would, um, vote on a budget for water and sewer, and then subsequently vote on a rate to cover that, to generate the revenue we need.
Right, when we're doing the budget, we look at what the, what, we look at what tax increase is gonna be.
Or the, it's not, not tax, but the water rate?
No, but when we're doing, like, your, your, how much, and so, so I like to kind of have that.
Right, 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 what does this do to the, to a rate pair?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, 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 definitely.
Okay. So I'm gonna just scroll that, I'm gonna go down to the bottom at first. It shows an overall increase of 1.97, about $1,500. Um, and I'll go up and...
This is water fund budget.
So, if you look, if you start here, there's only a few items that really increased, um...
Casey, let's make sure everybody's looking at the right sheet here.
Okay.
So mine, mine says minus 0.69% at the bottom.
What happened?
Hmm?
Yeah.
Oh, shoot, you know what, I... You know what I probably did is I just played around. Does it say $80,000 for capital fund transfer at the bottom?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty.
Yeah, it's because I was playing around with the numbers. I must have reprinted. So the capital fund transfer is eighty-eight and the bottom line is 1.97. So I, I must have printed that when I was playing around with it.
Ah, okay.
Sorry.
All right, good.
So that was one of the comments is, at this point, we've went through it and went through it, and the only thing we could see cutting, which we don't feel would benefit the town, would be the capital fund transfer, which is the transfer that we do to plan for capital expenditures. That's why that number eighty was in there. I was just playing around to see what it would look like. Everything else is exactly the same that I have up here. And so that really would not benefit the town to do that. So if we go through here, I'll start at the top. Basically, we take office and public work salaries, and it's 10% water, 10% sewer. That's where those figures come from. It's formula-based, so those really don't change. Insurance anticipated to increase a little bit over last year's budget. And then going down through, a lot of the other stuff is decreases based on actual usage that we've seen year-to-date and in fiscal year 2018. Utilities, we anticipate a bit of a decrease, again, based on actual usage this year and last year. Pump house maintenance, we did feel needed to be increased. We worked with Kenny and Tom on these categories, and we need to go up a little bit based on what we've seen over the last two years. Equipment charges are fixed. Not much else changed here. Communications, we see that going down a little bit. And then some nominal increases in testing. Permit fees, we're basing that on actual, what we've seen. And no other changes. Capital will stay the same as it has been.
I have a question about depreciation.
Sure.
So we've got quite an amount in there from the 2017, 2018 actual?
Yeah, that was from the, I think it's a grit removal system that we had. So that was a great big capital expenditure for the sewer plant. So when they did our audit, we had a big depreciation for that. That's my understanding.
I'm just curious about why that'd be late. But that, that would be on the sewer side. This is water, right?
It must have been split because I think there's the same thing in, water has some too. No, it's not. It's the meters. It's the water meters. That's what it is.
Yeah.
It's the water meters.
Otherwise labeled depreciation.
Church. Yeah.
We were thinking that was the forgiveness on the loan, right? Is that why we thought that came out?
Yeah, I'm not positive about that.
Anyway, but we don't have to worry about that going forward.
Correct. That was a one-time thing.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yes, that would have been around water meter time.
Speaking of meters, how are we coming with finishing up? How many are they putting in this year?
Twenty this year. What's that number, Casey? I think we had it.
Ninety-six. We're going to do twenty, it'll be seventy-six.
Couple more years.
Why are we only doing twenty?
I know. Shaun's like, why don't we have them all in? He said to you today.
That's what I wondered.
So this is water. That's what the bottom line looks like. $5,900 increase, 1.97 is what we're thinking.
Hopefully not.
You'd rather push.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's not part of the plan here.
Right. Yeah, that's a lot of meters to have outstanding.
Well, it is because I'm sure my grade's going to go down when I get a meter.
Right. And you're not the only one.
Yeah, there's ninety-some out of us. They have that potential.
Right. Totally.
So on the water, just to make sure we're all on the same page, for line 31, unfortunately the one that was printed out was when we were messing around with the, you know, if we can adjust and where we would adjust. So that should be $88,000 in cell D-31.
Yeah.
So it comes out, what we are seeing right now is 1.97%.
And the, and it's 307 to 11 is the amount. And that's a decrease of $5,923.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just generally, I think our attitude has been, let's not decrease capital.
Yes.
It's not, never, it always comes back to bike it.
Right.
Okay. Good, next.
Let's go to water capital plan.
Good segue.
It's going to be hard to, can I make this bigger? I'm going to go to the other version so I can make it bigger.
Isn't tobacco supposed to be water and sewer department? Was that in here?
That was. When are we going to buy that from water and sewer?
We were going to purchase it for.
Yeah. We did. Put the meters in.
Actually. That thing has been getting a fair amount of use around town.
It's been kind of weird.
Is it, so is the, the water farm getting credited for the use for the rest of the town?
Well, do they get billed for the use?
There's a town equipment charge. There's a town equipment charge between departments for water and sewer versus public works.
That was supposed to be purchased with water money and be water equipment, water and sewer equipment, right?
Yeah, that's just what I recall. Anybody else who was here?
But I don't know if it, I don't know if it matters. I mean, it should, I guess, that's what we're going to do, but...
Oh, you mean in terms of having it down here as replacement?
Right. Because it's in the, it's in the highway.
It's in the highway capital right now?
Well, it must be.
Because it's not here.
It's got to be somewhere. Well, we don't have the highway capital.
No.
It's not here.
Equipment. You mean it would be under the equipment capital?
For replacement in like 10 or whatever, it would be 10 or 12 or sometimes 15 years.
And that new pickup we bought was replaced a sewer and water truck.
That's true, too. Is that also not, you don't see that in here?
Public Works truck. It's down there.
Public Works?
Well, that's Kenny's.
A portion of...
What, there's another?
Some of that piece.
Well, I know the payment on that new truck, or that new truck costs us more than $3,000 a year.
So the truck itself went under equipment, but the fit-up on the back, like the accessory piece of it, that was, I don't remember how much, like four or $5,000 that got split between sewer and highway because of the use of it. So this is right around where the current balance is, is 519. And then looking ahead, we're going to do the same, we're proposing the same amount, the $88,000. But in looking ahead at the cost of these projects, we are look, consider, and we won't have to deal with that until then, but we're sort of looking ahead to say probably increasing about $2,000 a year over the next four years, a little bit at a time we need to increase.
I'm just thinking about the...
And the other thing we talked about is, as you'll notice, for this year, Bridgman Roof, we're not allocating anything because that project's going to get done. We did actually add back the year after because I think has what, 30-year lifespan or something like that? And so we could potentially decrease that $5,000 or, or do, you know, we could do less. It just depends, but...
And the same with the church street bond is going to be paid off? Is that why that's a dash?
Because there's nothing, right, no.
Same issue, same.
There's no, there's nothing this year that project was done, but then we'll have, I believe these are interest payments and some payback. I didn't play with those numbers at all. I took what was there, so...
I think we can probably get more than 30-year life cycle out of the roof structure that we're looking at. So it would, we can probably, we could potentially drop that number if it will help us on the budget.
To a rate or something like that if it, but it won't make a difference this year. It won't make a difference this year, but if we wanted to kind of keep it to eighty-eight and not increase, we could take it out of Bridgman essentially.
Well, I think the danger with not increasing this capital improvement budget is the big, I mean...
If you look at, whoops, the amount of projects that are needed and the total cost.
Right. We're not, yeah, I mean, we're not...
And obviously, some of them you would bond for and whatnot, depending on how big the project was, but it's not like you need three point, you know, $3 million all at once, but we need to be thinking about the future.
No, but we'd be in a better position if we had it saved.
Right.
And I think that Danny's bringing up that we do have a couple bits of, pieces of equipment that probably should show up on this, like as a, you know, saving towards replacement.
I think that is, is from what I've seen, like, just in terms of capital, we lump all equipment in one sort of spreadsheet, one area. It may actually get expended from, say, a water or sewer account, but we keep all equipment in one category, I believe.
But that won't work for...
Well, that means that $10,000 equipment needs to be a real number, not a, just a number. If you're going to do it that way, right? If you're charging, if you've got an equipment charge...
Then that's got to be in...
It's got to be a real number, especially now that we're buying equipment.
It wouldn't be a, in order to do that, wouldn't you have to do something in your operating budget where you, in the, in addition to putting, in the operating budget, in addition to $88,000 capital fund transfer, you'd have to have another line that was a transfer fund to the capital equipment fund?
It is right there.
Oh, it is.
It's the administrative charge under reservoir maintenance. It's...
That administrative charge goes to the, to the capital equipment budget?
Yeah.
That's confusing.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry, not there. Town equipment charge there. Town equipment charge is separate.
That's what I'm saying. That $10,000 number needs to be a real number, not just a, you know, static number. I mean, it was $10,000 when we didn't have a backhoe and a brand-new truck.
Right.
It can't be $10,000 when we've got a brand-new backhoe and a brand-new truck. That's my point. And I, I'm fine with that number, you know, being a charge, but it needs to be a real number.
You think it's fine to?
I think it's fine.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are you trying for seven years on that piece of equipment or 10?
I don't have it, I don't have it scheduled in front of me.
Just so, just running the scenario, though, if we knew it were seven and we can scale out what it's going to cost us seven years out, and that's how we plug our number back in, that's what you're trying to get at, right?
I agree.
So you're trying to get that.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
I understand.
So, you know, that transfer of funds needs to be a real transfer of funds.
But I'm confused about why we want to do it that way and why we wouldn't want to put the pieces of equipment in the capital, in the water. I guess it's water and sewer, but...
Right. I don't know the answer to that either, because we already got one truck in there.
And, yeah. Whatever. I guess as long as we know, I guess I'm, yeah, I, okay. So I guess I'd kind of agree with Danny and Shaun. We're just talking about as long as we could back up and figure out what that $10,000 number, what does it need to be?
When I looked historically, it appears that that's the number that's been being used for a long time.
Exactly my point. We have since bought a brand-new backhoe and a brand-new truck that we designated.
And the truck is probably a seven, we would probably typically do seven years on a vehicle.
Right. So my point is, if that $10,000 number that we've used for a number of years is accurate...
Right. It's a shot in the dark.
That's right.
And the, so we want to schedule out the truck and schedule out the backhoe.
Which they should be scheduled out in the equip, if they're in the equipment, they should be in there.
They should be in there, and the backhoe's probably 15, 20, or I don't know.
Right. But the town equipment charge, I believe, has to do with use of the equipment by this department, and it runs...
So it's not going directly to the capital equipment fund?
It's, right, it's equipment charge, so it's like...
Yeah. It's like the labor charge.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's not, so we aren't accounting for replacing the backhoe and the truck?
In the equipment fund we are, but not here.
So it's over there, which means it would be getting paid out of the town budget, not out of water and sewer. And the backhoe is mopped with water and sewer money.
It absolutely was.
So it should be in that, not in the town budget.
You ever want to replace it, it should be in.
Okay.
And we should, like, the water shouldn't be paying for the use of the backhoe. The town should be paying for the use of the backhoe. See what I'm saying?
Oh, I see.
Is that what I understand?
Right. Right. Basically going to be used in the village.
Right.
Basically for water and other village things.
So the, so the water system shouldn't be paying for the use of the backhoe in this equipment charge. The town should be. We, we own it, so it should be in the capital, the capital section on the water section.
Oh, I see.
And the town should be getting charged for the use other than the water system, right?
Although the charging back and forth is a little bit squishy and kind of confusing.
That's probably why they just plugged in the number.
It's kind of like the 10%.
You know, in this capital improvements, which is not capital equipment, we do have a truck already, so at some point, there's been equipment in there. It sounds to me like we need a equipment, capital equipment fund for the water and sewer, which I got to believe...
And they're two separate budgets.
Yeah.
That's a pain. Well, wait, should we keep ahead? Does the sewer have any of these things in?
Because your, your capital equipment budget is voted on at town meeting.
Right.
Whereas your water and sewer is voted on here and paid for by the ratepayers and not by the whole town. So they kind of have to be, I would think, be separate equipment funds.
Yeah. So in the, in the sewer, we have, you know, Sherry just said we have a public works truck and we have public works equipment in the sewer capital.
Oh, I didn't get to that, excuse me. We sure do. So...
Which is, kind of makes sense because for, because you have to split it somehow between water and sewer. So it looks like we're splitting it kind of even, right? Between water and sewer for the truck. The truck gets split pretty evenly?
Right.
Or not? Kind of.
Well, I think they do. I think the water and sewer and capital improvements, those stuff, those should be the same as far as the equipment and the truck. Hey, don't you?
Yeah. They should each be pitching on the same.
Right.
Yeah. You're basically splitting costs between water and sewer, assuming that it's going to be roughly equal.
I mean, they, they do use tobacco a lot, but I believe the majority of it is all in the village and the majority of it involves water or sewer. I mean, they, they do use the backhoe a lot, but I believe the majority of it is all in the village and the majority of it involves water or sewer.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
The majority, not everything, obviously. You know, the truck, the pickup, that could go, Kenny's truck is definitely a public works truck they're talking about here. So the new truck, I mean, what's the majority of the use?
Truck.
Everyone uses that for everything.
So does it, so does it need to, should it be in the water and sewer? Maybe not. Maybe that gets covered out of the 10,000. But, but the, um, the backhoe should be in here.
Yeah, the backhoe should be in here, I think. Along with Kenny's truck that he uses.
Which is already in here.
Which is already in.
So that, so Kenny's truck is good, we just need to add the backhoe. And we don't necessarily even need to fund that for this year, but it needs to be in here.
Replacement needs to be in here.
Right.
I would agree with Alan. Leave the other truck where it is.
Yeah.
And sometime we'll look at, go and figure out the use or whatever. I think the $10,000 needs to be looked at, figured out what it really is.
Paying for.
Yeah, just so we know.
Yeah.
For one thing, if it's an old one, but it's been around for 700 years.
Yeah, it's probably not accurate.
Probably, no.
It's probably, it's just a nod in the direction of, alright, so.
We usually just take a percentage anyway.
Yeah.
For the debt.
Well, we do still for the labor.
Right.
That's just a percent. And I believe there was a time when they tried, the town manager's office tried tracking on time cards, which was difficult, but they tried ta, tracking water and sewer time and basically came to the conclusion that on average, it was about 10%. So stop tracking, cause it's a pain, but. So.
We need to be comfortable with using the 10 for this cycle and addressing these questions?
I think so, and then we need to, yeah, just basically, we would just, I think, we could roll forward. It'd be nice in future to have a line item in both capital budgets for the backhoe.
Yeah, for equipment.
For equipment, heavy equipment or?
Even equipment, I mean, we got that, we got that machine that goes squirt in the night, right?
I guess I'd like to research, because it appears that all equipment is lumped into one and it's not separated out by water and sewer, that backhoe is in the same.
It's probably because the water and sewer never bought any equipment like that before. It was just that when we decided, we made a decision like, that partly because those meter pits that still need to be installed and partly because we were hanging on to, we were hanging on to the excavator longer, we got it fixed, and we said, let's buy this back loader backhoe, but primarily, it's gonna spend a lot of time doing water and sewer, so let's, let's have water and sewer buy it. So it's, I think, what happened was, it just never got, it was a new thing. They hadn't, we hadn't had one of those before at all, and now we have one, we bought a water sewer.
But we buy other, we buy other equipment for the water sewer as well. That's why, I mean, in the, in the, in the sewer, we have equipment and truck already in it, in there. So I don't know why we can't have them in water.
Right, we have the trucks in water.
Well, we have Kenny's truck and we have an equipment line that doesn't have the backhoe in it, so we need to just put the backhoe in that line.
And it needs to be, the, the replacement cost for the backhoe needs to be split between water and sewer. In, in a equipment line.
Right.
But we wouldn't necessarily fund it for this coming budget year anyway, or we wouldn't have to.
And I'm fine with that, but we need, I mean, we haven't voted on this yet, why not?
We have not. So we could add it, is what you're saying.
Let's fix it right now.
While we're here.
So then we transfer from the towns to their use of that?
Oh, for the use, yeah, that was what Aaron was saying. But so the thing is, it's a little squishy, because then the, we were also using other, the other town trucks.
Other town stuff for trucks for the sewer that they don't get charged for. If they need a 10-wheeler load of stone to do a sewer project, they run down and get the stone. So some of this, we're talking about the bulk of the use.
So that, that's why there's a $10,000 payment from water and sewer for equipment or from water in the budget is to help cover the cost of like, exactly what Danny just said, we need to run the 10-wheelers and get material and.
Or the red pick, the new pickup that they use for water. It's outfitted specifically for water and sewer.
Right. So that pays for.
All I'm asking is put the backhoe.
Just put the backhoe in a replacement.
You wanna add it to the capital for water and sewer, a line for it.
In sewer though, we could just tack it on to the, there's already a public works equipment line. So we could, right? Yeah, that we're using. So water, we could add public works equipment line and we could put the back, or.
Do you think we should be more specific and say backhoe?
Backhoe. And then next year, we'd know what it's for.
So there's other equipment, like, they got like a jetter or a thowler or a vacuum pump or that stuff that we buy.
Oh, needs to be replaced.
Equipment. The pontoon boat is gonna need to be replaced. There's equipment down there that traditionally.
Yep.
Is water and sewer equipment. We have to buy a new camera to look up through sewer, that's a big piece of equipment.
True.
So we have to add equipment and we have to add backhoe to both?
Well, sewer already has equipment. Sewer has truck and equipment, water only has truck.
Right. So we have to add equipment to the water. We have to add, and then we have to add backhoe to both.
But you, and you don't wanna change the 88,000, so we should just shift some numbers around to make that pan out?
Or maybe they, those are, we're just throwing those in right now and not necessarily trying to rock the budget.
So the 88,000 is town money going into the.
88,000 is the wa, when you look at the water.
Yep.
The water.
Or sewer.
Operating bu, yeah, the operating budget, the bottom line is a capital, it's, it's 88,000, what we're putting in the capital, from water.
Oh, from the water, right. Yep, okay, yeah, I got it, yeah.
Water doesn't have an equipment fund, because Mexi Sewer has all these different, all these things you mentioned were sewer items. They weren't water, none of them were water items.
No, but the backhoe is.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you have a backhoe line, maybe they don't have.
I gotta be honest with you, sir, if we did have, just adding an equipment line into that schedule.
Into the water.
I can do it myself.
Yeah, she's doing it right now.
I just did it, it's done.
So let's just. I'm getting cranky, I'm hungry.
We could track the backhoe separately, cause that's a big thing. So she had.
For replacement.
Yeah, that'll work.
Big deal.
Just do it.
So then the other question is.
For those after us, then they'll know more than we know.
We don't wanna change the 88 until we know what that number is anyway.
Right.
And I'm not even saying we gotta add it this year.
Right, so you could.
Saying what, it needs to be there.
She's doing it.
You're doing it right now, so you could actually do a dash for the initial and you could do a dash for this year. On both. And then, then the future stuff, we need to figure out.
Right. Give us some time to figure it out.
And that we can do next year even.
Yep.
But now that you've added the line?
We will remember.
Remember.
That's right, we'll remember. More importantly, it'll give you, give us a year to figure it out. Cause I'd also, for next year, I'd like to see what that $10,000 number is, if it's.
Yeah, right.
If it's close.
Right.
For next year.
Wait, don't do dashes in all of them.
Well, I want to, because I'm not gonna put anything in for this year, so.
Wouldn't upset it.
Okay.
This year.
Oh, right, okay. Fair enough. Alright, so that was a side trip down backhoe lane.
That damn backhoe's been fun on us for 10 years.
Okay, any further questions on, any further questions on the water budget? 1.97% increase, $5,933.
Yeah. I think it looks good for now.
$88,000 to capital.
Yeah.
Okay? Moving on to sewer?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm gonna scoot down to the bottom line first.
Oh, we have a slightly different number there as well.
Yes.
We have a 2.74%. Twelve.
What do you have in capital? Cause I was playing around, but you have the same thing. Eight, capital's supposed to be 88. Is that where you have the difference?
No, we got 88 there.
Yeah, it's there.
We do? Where is it?
Yeah, we got.
Transfer.
Line 44 is a difference case.
No, the one you have is correct. You know what it is, is it's just that, um, what I saved to the thumb drive is my older version, so give me one sec, I'll fix that.
So 2.74 is correct?
Yes, 2.74, $12,137.
Okay.
Yep, it's right.
Yep, and the same, we're, we're putting the same amount into capital, which may, may not be prudent in the long run.
I think if I put $400 in there, it shows 350%.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, the percentage lines are always funny, huh?
So. That was high in 17, 18, because we had to hire, we had.
We paid.
Colin, Colin is still doing that, yeah.
Paid contracts on the area.
Yep, we did.
Then we didn't budget anything, but now we're budgeting $400 just in case. Or is that, cause now we've got people, right? We got a couple of people now, right?
Yeah. Yeah? So some of that comes out of there. I don't care. No?
Somebody's gotta take the sample, right?
Yeah.
I need, it does need to stay, it's, it needs to be bigger in the future, but for now, we have a placeholder. It's some of the weekend coverage, things like this.
So I think the budget looks good.
Right, because if they're, that's overtime for them.
Yeah, actually, that's a good point, Danny, so, um, the 400 is probably when, if, if Kenny has a vacation and Edward is doing the coverage during the regular work week.
Yes, that's exactly what it is, that's why it's so low.
If Edward does the coverage when Kenny's still on in a given pay cycle, then it's OT for that weekend.
It's only in the absence of him.
It's not a full day, but sometimes. So we have it covered.
And we looked at what we've spent this current year and that's where that number came from. So yes, $12,137, 2.74%.
Yeah.
Looks good.
I think that looks good. We think it looks good. Nice job.
Good job.
But the, uh, capital, I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry.
No, that's fine, I'll go to that.
The sewer capital, top line, sewer connection fees, just, what is that? It's not an expense, is it?
I haven't know, it says fees collected at time of connecting to the system, that's why we don't have. So we had a category for that with a balance in it, um, but we're, apparently, it looks like we didn't plan any additional fees. So what we could potentially do is, um, you could just shift that $6,139 into something else. Just basically subtract it and move it into something else.
So this sort of just noting that when we have a, when, when we charge somebody a thousand bucks to hook onto the sewer system, it goes to the capital?
Revenue. That's how it showed, yeah.
Not to revenue, to capital.
It goes to capital, so.
Which is okay, it's just odd that.
We could just take the category away and shift that some, somewhere else. It's been there, I looked back a couple of.
Shit, add it to the old backhoe part.
That's a great idea.
That was funny.
Or to the, uh, either backhoe or equipment.
Yeah.
So moving.
Because it's weird, just from a, just thinking about it conceptually, that, the, that, that's the only thing in here that's really revenue. Everything else is an expense. And we're not spending, we're not ever gonna spend money on a sewer connection, we get money from a sewer connection.
Correct, yeah.
So it's just a little bit weird, so it's just.
But you don't, you don't suppose, who pays when they have to do a tap wet tap or whatever?
A what?
When they.
Customer.
When the customer pays.
Connection fee.
Connection fee. They pay the contractor. It's not part of the connection fee.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, oh, right.
They pay us the dollars, but we gotta get Redhead up here to do the live tap. So somebody's gotta pay Redhead.
We do pass, so we pass that through. So we just had one recently, we passed it through.
Right, but maybe traditionally.
We had to hire somebody to do a larger.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah, it's just weird. And it's just been that way.
Well, let's do, let's put it simple.
Do you think that they was putting, they didn't wanna put it in the regular budget just because it wasn't a regular thing you could count on? It was just kinda random, like, one is one time things.
That's true, that you can't, yeah, I guess.
Right, but it's not, it's a, it's a, it's, it's, we received the money, we're not spending the money.
Right, this confuses me that it's in the capital.
If it's in here, we should be spending it.
So if you'd like, I can just shift what's sort of in that category.
To something else.
To something else, I could shift it down, you know, not changing any really, the bottom line, but just put it down and I could split it up into, from the equipment and backhoe replacement or something.
That'd be great.
Just get it out of there.
Okay.
Yeah, or just put it all in, you don't even have to split it. Put it all in backhoe replacement is fine.
Feed money.
Or, or public works, yeah.
I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna.
I'd be inclined to put that into the actual infrastructure itself as opposed to a piece of equipment.
Yeah, I would, that makes more sense to it.
Because of the.
I mean, that's your paying, you're getting, you're taking reserve from the system.
Backhoe upgrade, that we've got $52,000.
The anaerobic, the anaerobic cover as an example.
We're like 948,000 short on that one right now. I'd say we should kick the 6,100 in there.
Right into plant upgrades for anaerobic. Well, what's, what are we actually gonna do soonish? Next, is the anaerobic cover?
Well, and here's the thing is, it shows.
Anaerobic cover will be this next year.
I don't know if we need to move it into that category, because our current balance is 108 and the estimated project cost is 100. So we actually have, if, if that hasn't changed, we have what we need in that category.
The sledge disposal system is coming up.
Okay, so maybe that one, that would be one we could put some money in.
That one's short.
Direct capacity issue.
Coming up short.
Yeah, what the money ever needed, what they can have.
So you wanna move the whole amount to the sledge disposal?
Please.
Don't even sound like fun. How often do they do that? Fun, you know? Cause we did it three years ago.
Yeah, we did.
And we're up in, on the cross over.
The target is 15 to 20, if you're lucky. 15 to 20 years.
But it was something about you can't really know until you bring down a room or something, or.
Nah, we've been, we, we know, because we work with the firm I used to work with and we can fish depth it and sledge judge it. So we have a profile on the blanket depth.
Sledge judge.
You ask.
You bet that worked, don't you? Hey, do you, if you get out the pontoon boat, is there those sledge judges?
Dave, this is the one certification I let go.
He did.
Just saying. Just saying.
So do we have to do a motion or anything, or can we just keep moving with this?
She's gonna adjust.
It's not gonna change the overall. Just shift.
Except the water and sewer budgets as proposed and updated. Which doesn't change the number, but it just changed the layout.
System budget.
Wait, so did Sherry or?
Sherry did it, I have to.
Um, but I just didn't, I don't know how to word it, cause it's, it's water, wastewater and sewer budgets.
Wastewater and sewer.
2019.
Yeah, wastewater is.
Wastewater, white bird.
So, so you're saying you, you moved that we approved the water and wastewater budgets for?
2019, 20, uh, 20, as we've made changes to them tonight.
I don't have the Y2K. You made it through that?
Through what, what?
You went through Y2K?
Yeah, 20 years ago.
He does something?
The world, the world was gonna end, wasn't it?
I was there, I remember.
Sorry, Casey, are we?
20.
Danny seconded, any more discussion while we're off the rails?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, we have a budget. At some point later date, we'll, we'll have to vote on rates to cover the budget that we just approved.
I do have, um, something I can share with you in regards to the revenue, which is that, um, basically, what I did was look at three quarters in and, um, the first three quarters.
Did you ever change in the cycle of billing or something with water and sewer?
Yeah.
Cause I got a surup notice and I went and paid it, paid it to the bank, you know?
Yeah. And it didn't get paid.
Well, it did get paid on time, clearly. So I just wondered.
I don't know what it used to be before, so I don't know, so I can answer.
June.
Right.
You'd have one.
It's May.
It was actually right around tax time. Yeah, that's right, yeah.
So anyway.
It took us a little time to get the cycle going.
Must be, cause I did, you know, your schedule checks out, we'll do, and I don't think.
Yeah, we, that wasn't planned out very good. Yeah, we, that wasn't cleaned out very good.
Your bill doesn't vary, I mean, you're not...
Until July, is that accurate?
Yes, they'll, they'll read in the first week of July, and then the bills will be due like August 10th. So I would say it's probably at one of the August meetings is when we can have our data.
So we had talked about, actually, we had talked about in a previous meeting, we'll have to look at our first year with the new rate structure, evaluate, and we had mentioned August to do a more thorough evaluation, so we can, then we would be figuring out, okay, you know, do we have the revenue side covered to the budget that we just, you know, put out there? I know it's a little bit on its head, but it's just because we instituted the new structure this, in this last nine months. We had to kind of do that cycle. That's, I don't know, we talked about this at length, we didn't know another way to do this.
Right, no, we're, I think we're moving the right way.
Yeah.
All right, select board reports. New business.
I don't know if this is new business or old business, but I had a little thing with Harvick Electric Department, because I'm having some work done at the house, and so I called, because the contractor asked me to call and have him put a boot on the thing, you know?
On the wire.
Whatever that is. And it's a safety thing.
Yeah, it's like you don't get electric.
And so I was told that Harvick Electric, unlike all other electric department companies that I call, Vermont Electric Co-op, Green Mountain Power, Rownton Electric, Harvick Electric charges $150 for that service. And, you know, so I called to try to figure out what that was all about, because I felt like it's a safety thing, because then my contractor said, no, no, we'll be okay, you don't have to pay $150. And I was like, well, you know, that's okay. Really? Are you sure you're going to be okay? Because, you know, pay this thing, get $150 and fight about it later. But Vermont Electric, yeah, I think it was Vermont Electric Co-op that called me back, and she said that they used to charge a fee, but they decided to stop charging the fee because somebody got electrocuted, because they didn't want to pay a fee.
Exactly what your contractor...
So I think it's, it feels like, you know, Digsafe.
Yeah.
That doesn't cost anything either. So I have put a question in with Lynn, because Mike Sullivan was out of town.
Yeah.
And no one has gotten back to me. But I plan to bring it up with Mike when he comes to the next meeting.
The next meeting, I believe.
Um... He's scheduled for the next meeting. But I just think it's, I think it's a shitty thing.
Yeah.
Pardon my French. I mean, I, you know, they repeatedly report that they're up with revenues and under budget, so I think this $150 fee for the safety of their customers...
They could just do...
Overall, that they should figure out some way to get rid of that, just like everybody else. So that's my new old business.
All right. Thank you for the report.
Or we could just sell it later.
Then there's that. But they still shouldn't be charging that fee. And there was, there were other little weird things, like, I was at the store, I couldn't like walk over and pay the fee. I was going to do that, but she couldn't take a credit card over the phone, like, really? You can't, really? Yeah. But those are your other little wrinkles in the deep, in the day.
It's a big, big city operation.
All right.
I question it all.
Uh, so we'll bring that up.
That's what I got.
All right, any other new business, old business type things?
No executive session.
That is a beautiful thing.
That is a beautiful thing.